I will now call the January 18th, 2011 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. I would ask that you stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I would like to welcome those of you in attendance tonight, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council Meeting. The next item is the appointment of District 1's council seat, vacated by now State Representative Jeanne Lauer. We will have a motion, and then we can have discussion. So is there a motion for the appointment of Jim May to fulfill the vacancy of State Representative Jeanne Lauer?
Your Honor, I'd be honored to make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
This is an appointment that needs to be made to finish the term of Representative Jeanne Lauer, who is now a State Representative from Missouri. This is a temporary appointment that would go through the April 5th election. I would point out that Mr. May is likely to be confirmed for this seat tonight. It's the mayor's prerogative to appoint someone, and he has appointed Jim May for this. I will vote for Mr. May tonight, but I would point out to members of the 1st District, voters of the 1st District, that Jeff Cobell is also on the ballot for this election, and it's incumbent upon the voters to examine the record of both individuals and meet with them, find out where they stand on the issues, and cast a ballot accordingly. This, again, this seat takes us through the April 5th election, but it is a temporary appointment. As we move forward, we have many pressing issues here in Blue Springs. The public safety tax is certainly one of those. The MIP is one of those, the Adams Dairy Parkway red development issue is one of those, and as we move forward, we have many issues that we need to talk about and address. So again, to the voters of the 1st District, I would ask you to weigh both candidates and cast your votes accordingly on April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and I would agree with you. That certainly is the case, and as mayor, I had the responsibility of making an appointment. There were very, there are a lot of good candidates, considered both Jim and Jeff friends. But as I take a look at Mr. May's resume, he's been a resident for over 25 years. He served on a planning commission that I appointed in 2008, went through the Blue Springs Citizens Police Academy, to name just a few things, but one of the other things that stands out for me, and people know where I am on this, is he's a Vietnam veteran, serving two tours of duty in the United States Navy. Certainly, both men are very capable men, and I'm blessed to be in a position where I have good people to choose from. And again, and both of these gentlemen that will be on the ballot, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later, are friends of mine. And certainly, the voters in District 1 will make the decision in April who will represent them for the next three years after that election. So that being said, we said we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we will have the city clerk, Assistant City Clerk administer the oath of office to Mr. May. Would you come forward, please, and congratulations. I think you're all going to stand right down there in front of the lecture.
(inaudible)
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 (applause)
Mr. May, well, Councilman May, you can now take your seat on the dais. And congratulations again. This certainly will be baptism by fire, because we have an executive session as soon as we get done with this tonight. Next, we have the consent agenda, or there are items that need to be pulled. Seeing none, we accept a motion for approval.
I still move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing on Jack in the Box.
Your Honor, for this public hearing, I'd like to offer one exhibit into record, which includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, location map, map of proposed area of the vacation. F. David, a publication as advertising examiner, November 27, 2010, vacation application to applicant's explanation of their request, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, copy of letter sent to property owners notifying them of the public hearing, and tax abatement waiver. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of this public hearing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Your Honor and Councilmen. Again, before this evening is a request to vacate two easements, one being a stormwater retention and drainage easement, the other being portions of a separate drainage easement, and this is for the Jack in the Box restaurant, just shy of 3,000 square feet in size. The drive-through restaurant is proposed to be located on Lot 1 of Village Gardens subdivision, the southeast corner of Mock Avenue and 7 Highway. You can see the site in question pointing out to the northwest and western portions of one drainage easement, and the southeast corner is the other. Allow me a moment here to point out the areas in question. This is the easement, as mentioned, on the west and northwest corner, and then the triangular-shaped one to the southeast. The applicant, again, Jack in the Box, is requesting to vacate a portion of that easement located southeast corner of the site. The removal of the drainage easement will allow for the construction of their two trash enclosures, and, Your Honor, you'd be pleased to know one of them is for trashing, and there's for recycling. So they have, technically, they're two trash enclosures, but the function, one is for trash, one is for recycling. There are no known utilities in this easement to be vacated, so it's simply vacating that portion necessary, again, for those, the trash enclosure itself. A storm retention and drainage easement proposed to be vacated at the northwest corner, and again, along the West Park property line, is proposed to be vacated in order to allow the construction of their monument sign along 7 Highway. And this, too, has no known utilities to be vacated within that easement as well. Again, the application was found to be in compliance with the Unified Development Code, was presented to the planning commission last week at the January 10th meeting, and the planning commission has recommended unanimously, including now Councilman May at that point, recommended unanimously approval of the vacations as presented this evening. And I'll certainly stand for any questions for their...
Are there any questions of Mr. Allen from council? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there a representative from the company that wishes to speak?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) Mr. Mayor and Council? My name is Brock Boyet. I'm a construction manager for Jack in the Box, working out of home office at 8312 Almond Road in Lenexa, Kansas, representing Jack in the Box in this application. The primary reason for vacate, requesting to vacate these easements is to allow for a development of the property in a slightly different way than it was originally conceived. The drainage easement along 7 Highway was originally planned to be a above-ground pond-type retention system. We've chosen to go underground with our stormwater retention system and have that area not be a pond close to 7 Highway. Still, it's going to be a landscaped area. It won't be parking or anything. It'll still be landscaping, but it'll just be at-grade landscaping instead of a depressed bowl type of a stormwater retention system. The other is just, it was intended to have some drainage pond in that area, and the way that we've got our drainage plan, it doesn't do so. It was also the best place for our trash enclosures, and as John said, one of them is for purely recycling, and the other one is for restaurant trash. So that's our request, and we would appreciate your approval.
Are there any questions from the council? I do have one question. Yes, sir. Jack in the Box has been vacant, has been vacated from this area, I think, for a long time. I think I heard on the radio the other day that there was one over in Wyandotte County.
Right. We had restaurants here until the early 80s, about '81, when they were closed. I think there were seven or eight of them, and we've been missing ever since. But we opened our first one back in the market at I-70 and 18th Street in Kansas City, Kansas, and it's doing very well. And so obviously, the people back in San Diego are anxious to hear when the second one's going to open, because a lot of people here remember us, as well as people that travel to St. Louis see us over there, so...
The last one I ate at was in Wentzville.
Very close. That's where some of the ones for the Kansas City one actually were bussed over and trained there, because that one and the one in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, were the two closest ones to training, so...
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
I will welcome fried tacos to the city of Blue Springs. I'm...
We'll have them.
Your Honor?
Councilman Carter?
Yes. What is the timetable for opening?
We would hope to be able to get our permits in the next couple of months and break ground. It takes about 90 to 100 days to build one, and then there's a training period before opening. So I would, that would put us opening in the early fall.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? In opposition to, we will close the public hearing. Now I would accept the motion or introduction.
I introduce it, Your Honor.
Bill 4150.
First reading of Bill Number 4150, an ordinance vacating a storm retention and drainage easement, and a drainage easement located on Lot 1, The Village Gardens, a subdivision of land in the city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both no?
Second reading of Bill Number 4150, an ordinance vacating a storm retention and drainage easement, and a drainage easement located on Lot 1, The Village Gardens, a subdivision of land in the city of Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Your Honor, move, be approved on its second reading, given its proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4328.
Okay, next we have introduction and reading of Bill 4151, approving Church of Christ final plat. I would like to introduce it.
First reading of Bill Number 4151, an ordinance approving the final plat for Church of Christ.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both no?
Second reading of Bill Number 4151, an ordinance approving the final plat for Church of Christ.
Your Honor, move it be approved on its second reading, given its proper ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4329.
Next, we have a presentation by the Red Development Company, an update of the happenings in Adams Dairy Landing. Ms. Julie?
Happy to be here tonight. Julie Jordan from Red Development, here to talk about one of my favorite subjects, Adams Dairy Landing. I think all of you have this map in your packet, and I kind of need glasses to read it, so I may try and guide us around a little bit. But I think if it's okay with you all, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through the site plan, give you a little bit of an update on where we stand with various tenants, and then if you have questions or anything, I'd be happy to entertain that. As you all know, the stores in yellow are currently open. That would be Staples through Target, Gordmans, Coles, and then some of the pad sites out there, and we have been pleased with, and they have been pleased with, their performance as well overall, the ones that give us a little bit of feedback. We're always thankful to hear about it. The orange outlines are those tenants that are sold or leased, and I've tried to put some opening dates on here so you all can track those. We don't always have control over the exact dates, particularly on the pad sites. Verizon, Chick-fil-A, Arby's, M&amp;I, we aren't in as much control, but we do know that Chick-fil-A plans to close in March and put a shovel in the ground right away and get open, which I know makes at least Todd happy. And Verizon, the last we've heard from them is a February or March opening as well. And then Arby's contractually has some opening requirements with us to work through their opening in the fall, probably more October timeframe. Michaels is, has given us an opening date of February 4th, so we plan to see them opening then. And then going across here in line, we've, a couple of these tenants, Ulta is a new, I don't know that we've announced Ulta as a tenant, but I do have following this, and I'll pull it up when we're through, walking through this. They are a cosmetic store and a great addition. We're thrilled. They have 389 stores throughout the country, and as some of you may recall, this was the Books-A-Million space originally. Books-A-Million came to us with a couple of, a couple of thoughts about what they wanted to do here, and we chose to go a different direction, and I'm pleased that Ulta will be opening here in October. The great news is that their sales are projected to be almost double what a Books-A-Million would do. So that's, that's exciting news and a great tenant, so...
It's exciting for us, too.
Yeah, I think so. Then as we work over to, I think everybody's probably most burning question is what's happening over on the old Lowe's site. As you all know, we took that back from Lowe's, had the opportunity to take that back. We've had such great interest out here from various retailers that we were thrilled to be able to get, have that opportunity. Ross is a store that we are in lease negotiations with, and they have allowed me to say that they are doing that, negotiating a lease with us. This would be the first Ross in the market, and they have 953 stores. I, again, have more detail on these tenants. I'll show you in pictures and things as we go. The, one of the purple locations, which are negotiating LOI, they have also allowed us to say that we are in that process with them, would be TJ Maxx slash Home Goods. So those are both in the same company. TJ Maxx, I think you all are pretty familiar with. Home Goods is about another 25,000 feet of home furnishing, same idea as TJ Maxx essentially. So that store would be about 50,000 square feet. Those are the two most, that we are the most comfortable with there. Right now, the third option, we're working on a lot of different opportunities there. We can do a larger, the large box that's on there, which is a toy store. We have a, some sporting goods, two sporting goods stores that we're working with also that would be slightly smaller than that, which would make the site work a little better. I'm sure our planners are sitting over here going, "Wow, how's that all going to fit?" So we'll work through all that. And then we also have a third option, that we have two, three, maybe four smaller stores that would, you know, five, six, 8,000 square foot stores that might be interested in pooling together in that location. So we're working all of those angles and hope to have something settled, and actually negotiating LOIs back and forth with, with a couple of them. So we hope to have that settled in the next 30 to 60 days. Then moving on into the shop locations, the pink, I'm sorry, I bet really the most, or purple, whatever that color is up there, in some cases, I can just give you general parameters, burgers, ribs, whatever, we're, you know, I can't give specific names. I'm sorry, I know that makes it challenging, but it's hard for me, too, but they, suffice it to say, we're close on, on almost all of those, because we are planning to start construction on those three buildings that are not under construction in the spring and be able to open those in the fall. The blue on the shops, Charming Charlie's. I don't know if you all are familiar with seeing Charming Charlie's in some of our other centers, but they are kind of a fun accessory store. We have, they are open in our shopping center in Leewood and in our shopping center in Lee Summit at Summit Fair. I think Summit Fair is number one or two in the country for them, which is, speaks very well, so we are looking forward to great sales out here as well. They are privately owned, and they have 94 stores currently. So I'm, I am so encouraged and pleased with our leasing group, who has accomplished amazing things in this very challenging market, and we did have a couple of our cohorts in the market, Colby Banker and a couple of other guys that we've been talking to leasing-wise that have been really happy to see this happen, happy to see this be able to come to fruition. We've got what we believe to be the best in each category so far. We think that what we've done may have caused a little delay in some of these areas, but it's made it a better shopping center, especially in the case of Ulta, and then getting the Lowe's parcel back, and we are, we couldn't be happier with how things are going out there. So we are thinking that the snow might damper things a little bit for us here, has and will going forward, but we're projecting building on the schedule that's up there as well. I'm trying to think if I have forgotten any, let's see if I can switch over to the... Okay, there's Charming Charlie's, if you can see. I'll flip through, I'd be happy to forward this, or Todd has it, he can forward you the descriptions and things, but just to get an idea of the stores and what they look like, a little feel for that. It's not the best resolution that we sent you, but it's Ulta. And Ross?
It has a nice ring to it.
Do you think so? You know, we did that on purpose, Mayor. I forgot to mention that, I should've...
Is there anything for men in this thing? I'm just curious.
Anything for men? Well, sure, TJ Maxx has some men's clothing in it, and...
No, we're not the market, I don't think.
Do you have a special request? I'll see what we can do. Every time we come out to meet with everybody, they usually have a request for a certain restaurant, so I'm happy to take any requests tonight. Do what I can.
Well, I certainly must make a request. If Todd can get a Chick-fil-A, certainly an American can get a Red Lobster.
You know, Mayor, we're close. They are, they wanted to get their Lee Summit store open, and I understand they're doing a fabulous job there, so we're keeping our fingers crossed out here. We're saving them a spot, for now. Can I answer any questions, or have I covered what you're interested in hearing about?
Well, certainly, we just needed an update, and I appreciate you coming in, doing that to kind of see where we are and let the public know kind of where we are, that we're not asleep on this thing. There's activity going on, especially in the downturn in the economy. It's amazing that we can open stores. We're probably one of the few locations that can actually do that.
That's absolutely true, yeah. It is, it is a true testament to our partnership and the location, and it's just, it's been a great experience for us. So thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Any questions? All right.
Would you like me to put the site plan back up, Todd, or are you...
Yeah, so Todd, if you want to maybe forward that slide presentation to the council, so they can learn a little bit more about us coming out here. Okay, thank you, Ms. Julie. Well, that brings us to mayoral announcements. I have a few. Number one is Councilman May, would you like to introduce your family that's in the audience tonight?
Of course. I'd like to introduce my lovely wife, Maxine, of 32 years, and a little small fellow behind her is my son, Jay, and I know most of the people around here know him from going to Blue Springs High School, so... My granddaughter is playing basket, well, no, she had a basketball game for Blue Springs, but she was unable to get here in time to see me inducted.
Okay, well, thank you, and some of you might remember, you're in Maxine's son, he went through the very first Citizens Police Academy.
That he did. Yeah, I know, the chief, he inquires about him from time to time.
Good. Well, anyway, thank you for being here tonight. Next, tomorrow, and the weather will not stop us, I will be leading the Wednesday 1:00 Walk. We call that WOW, W-O-W, and it's going to be at the Blue Springs YMCA at 1:00, and it's going to be free. You don't have to pay to do this. It's a partnership to allow people to not only walk with the mayor and exercise, when the weather's nice, you'll be able to get out of the weather on Wednesdays at 1:00 and go to the Y and walk. So we will have the fittest city in eastern Jackson County, and we have some other things to be announced later on as we try to make sure we have a healthy community. So I want to thank Cheryl for all of her work. She's kind of my point person in doing all this. And again, for those of you in the audience, as well as those of you that are watching on Cable TV 7, come out tomorrow at 1:00, get to YMCA, and walk with the mayor. Next, it's sadness that I report, and some of you already know this, Jeff's father passed. His name was Donald, Dr. Donald Cobell, and his visitation will be Thursday from 6:00 to 8:30 at Sweeney Phillips Holdren Funeral Home in Warrensburg. There will be a Masonic service at 6:00, a Micaleday service at 8:00. The funeral will be at the First United Methodist Church in Warrensburg on Friday at 10:00 a.m., and the interment will be at the Higginsville Veteran Cemetery. And so our condolences to Jeff, his family, and his mom on the passing of his dad. Next, we have the election, municipal election has been set for April 5th, and the candidates are District 1, as indicated earlier, Jim May and Jeff Cobell, and both of them are here tonight, District 1. I am proud to announce that in District 2, my mayor pro temp, and District 2 Councilman Ken Edmondson, provided that he votes for himself, and there is not a write-in campaign, is running on a pose. Congratulations. And in District 3, we have Planning Commission Chairman Susan Culpepper and Councilman Ron Fowler. In addition to these candidates running for District 1 and District 3, the citizens will have an opportunity to support the police department with a half-cent public safety tax, and this is to prepare for all the growth that we have in the city. And number one on the priority is to respond to an unfunded mandate by the federal government that we have a communication system in place by January 2013. Now, I don't like unfunded mandates. I didn't like it when I was a member of the House of Representatives, but this particular one is necessary. We must be in a position to communicate. We need to be in a position to communicate with other agencies without having to go through dispatch and, and all these other hoops the police department has to jump through, so... Chief, we're going to get the word out to the people, and I'm optimistic that when you make the case, people in Blue Springs will respond. you make the case, people in Blue Springs will respond. They responded in 2008 with two bond issues, although it was not a tax increase, they responded properly, and we had over 80% approval on both issues, when it relates to road improvements, of which we're already benefiting, I see the traffic on Moreland School Road. I can see it from the back of my house. They use that. In addition to, we'll have the Coleman Road Interchange is coming up next, this year sometime, isn't it?
It's going to bid in February.
Going to bid it in February, and then after that, we're going to be doing the other last phase of the, the last part, which I'm excited about, a diversion diamond interchange at Woods Chapel. If you've ever been to Springfield at I-44 and 13, you know what I'm talking about. It'll be one of the first ones in the area, I think only the second one in the state of Missouri. So we're excited about that. So there are exciting things going on. Blue Springs continued to progress and have progressive things happening, and in my state of the city address, the theme was, we're on the move. That concludes the Merrill announcements. Next, I have Thoughts to Punda. Yesterday was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s recognized birthday, and on the heels of that celebration, tonight's Thoughts to Punda comes from Councilman Grant Byerman, and is a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And it says, "Faith is taking the first step, even when you don't see the whole staircase." Thank you, Councilman. That brings us to visitors. I don't have any visitors speaker appearance forms. We will go into executive session, and I will need a motion to do that, but in between, a brief recess between that and us going into executive session, I need the council to assemble down front so we can take a photograph and update our website and other necessary media things. How's that? That summarizes all of it. So is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate and personnel matters?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
We're going to take about a five to 10-minute recess for us to take the photographs and to allow our visitors to excuse themselves, but...
Hey, Jim, Jim Holly, hang on a second.
Pardon? Go.